Morning, how are you?
I'm good. Where's Chuck and Steve?
I'm sorry, so where's Chuck and Steve? I don't know. You're going to be talking about yourself.
I guess so. Well, I saw the judge, so I know he's out there.
I don't know where the other two are. They'll drag in.
I didn't even see Steve's car in the parking lot.
Oh, is it?
And I was running late. Hi, Nancy.
Hi. How you doing?
Okay, how about yourself?
Good.
Leadership Texas on Sunday was really fun. Great bunch of ladies.
Oh, good.
Yeah, missed you.
Sorry I missed you.
Yeah, Jeanette and Penny Beaumont were just delightful.
Oh, they're terrific. They're real terrific people.
The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on May twenty-third, twenty-two thirty-three at ten a.m. in the Commissioners' courtroom at the County Administration Building, two hundred South Texas seventy, Suite one oh six. Public may watch on the meeting at Facebook. Brazos County, this meeting will be conducted by video conference with at least a quorum of Commissioners' Court members participating in person in the County Administration Building in accordance to provisions set forth in Section five-five-one-point-one-two-seven of Texas Government Code. First item on the agenda is invocation, pledge, allegiance to Texas, U.S. Texas flag. I'll meet the leaders. Father, I want to thank you again for your love and your mercy. I want to thank you, Father, for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us. I want to ask you, Father, that you will give us wisdom as more as we make decisions for the county. I hope that you'll continue to keep our first responders, law enforcement safe and all the things that they have to do in their jobs. Be with us this morning. I ask all these things in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Judge. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. And Lonnie Masterson.
Morning, Commissioners. I hope you're all having a good day. So I'm not going to lie, I was ready to come rain down some hellfire and brimstone, but I'm going to peel back on that a little. I know the committee was mostly in favor of a Veterans Treatment Court. It was like ninety-five percent, everybody but one person. And I know the one person who was against it, their misconception was that we already have the services that people with mental health issues and justice-involved veterans need. And as a justice-involved veteran myself, I will say that is incorrect. A lot of the services that we as justice-involved veterans need are not readily available in this community, and we won't have access to them unless a Veterans Court, Veterans Treatment Court does get put into place because that expands the services. It's actually going to expand the services for all veterans in the county because the VA, the bigger VA, will have its eye on the clinic here, and they've already looked at it, they've already talked about expanding it. Mental health treatment, we don't have a psychologist or a psychiatrist onsite here. It's all through telemed. We're short a counselor or two, so it is hard to get in. We get about one counseling appointment a week, whereas if we had a Veterans Treatment Court, we would have specific counselors set aside just for the veterans that are involved in Veterans Treatment Court. We would have specialty treatment tailored to those veterans in Veterans Treatment Court for their disability, for what their justice involved for, specifically for them, set aside just for them. I know that the problem with the Mental Health Court is funding and because there aren't really a lot of mental health services here that are available and affordable, that's a whole nother issue besides the Veteran Treatment Court issue because that is funded by TVC. The first grants for four years, there's a follow-up grant for another four years, and while those grants are running, there's nothing stopping the court from applying for more grants for veterans, and they're out there. People support the veterans in the state of Texas. People, I believe, want to support the veterans in this community. This, this community is rich with veteran history, and, and I think that we owe it to these veterans to show more than lip service, to actually show them that we really do care and we really do support our veterans. Not having a Veterans Treatment Court here when this county is the only county in Texas with its veteran demographic, with the population, the size of it, that doesn't have one, the other counties that are like us have a Veterans Treatment Court. Stuff is only going to get worse with veterans. As I talk to LEOs and people that I know, veterans are already struggling because of how we pulled out of Afghanistan. Veterans are already committing suicide. I responded to a call with a CIT officer just last week with a veteran that was suicidal, wanting to kill himself. He now comes to the peer support group that I run. There is a need in this community, there's a need in this county, and I, I think that if we don't make this happen, it honestly is a, a black eye for Brazos County. How can we say we support our troops if we're not acting upon it? How can we say that we do all these things if we don't actually do them? Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Lonnie. Pat Bocce.
Yes, sir, County Commissioners. Lonnie is right. Veterans Treatment Court, too much coffee this morning. The Veterans Treatment Court will bring a lot of resources to our area that we actually need, resources that we don't have right now. I, I fall under the Texas Veteran Commission that was talking to them yesterday morning, and they spoke of even coming down here and getting with face-to-face whoever they need to get face-to-face with to explain anything about the grants, the process, anything whatsoever. Tiffany Love that started the very successful Veteran Treatment Court in Waco would be the one to come down here and guide us. She's the expert on the matter. And there, there's rumor going around that they're trying to start a Veteran Treatment Court with benchmarks to meet. That's not a Veteran Treatment Court, guys. A Veteran Treatment Court is a program. It's a proven program with over ninety percent success rate, and I'm just, you know, everything's in place. We also have a Brazos County judge that has said, once the Commissioners vote yes on it, that, that he's on board, and I'm just, I'm, I'm just ready to get started. I know it's a process. I know we all have to work together. We've been working on this now for a year and a half, and we, we're, we're just at the same ending. And the committee, General Nino Nettles did an excellent job, the consensus from professionals in our area, fourteen of fifteen voted yes. It's just something we need. I've done counseling and Sandy Point, and I'm telling you right now, what this stops is the repeat offenders. It, it, it is, it's so crucial because these guys are out there and they're masking their issues from the combat zone or the military by drugs and alcohol. It's a four-phase program, and the first phase is the most important, and it's the cleanup. And then the VA, all, everything the VA does is free, and it's up to the county on the rules and regulations that have to be met to even be able to, you know, be in the Veteran Treatment Court. Surrounding counties have, have been in touch with me too, with possible candidates already, and this is something we need in the Brazos Valley. My only question that, that I have is what is our next step now? The committee said yes, we have the person that'll start it, we have a judge, we have the TVC funding that, I, I know it's going to take a while, I know we have to work together, but I think it's time for us to start working together a little more and figure out how to help the veterans in our community that are so badly in need of the help that the Veterans Treatment Court will bring, and not just the ones going through it, but others involved also. And if any of you have any questions, I am not the expert on the actual Veteran Treatment Court, but Tiffany Love is. I know the success rate, I've sat in on one, but any questions like we've answered for a year and a half, we'll keep answering them, and I don't mind, but I just, I plead with y'all to, to just, let's get this on the agenda and let's address the needs of our veterans in the Brazos Valley, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pat. Any other citizen input or concerns? That's all I had here. Number three is presentation and our discussion. Presentation of CIP twenty-three-five-five-eight Brazos County Administration Building Feasibility Study, Charles.
Good morning. Caitlin's been jealous because I do these, and she wanted to do some, so I'm just going to introduce her and let her go. Never mind.
Maybe a tag team?
She's the brains of the outfit.
I was fixing to say, she probably put all this together.
So I look for a joke about construction, but none of them were any good, no better than my normal joke, so I'll just omit that. So the Commissioners' Court has allocated money to do a feasibility study for the Brazos County Administration Building, and that covers the Area One, in no particular order, was the human resources. That is in the north wing of this building on the second floor above the current surplus area. Area Two is what we commonly know as the sanctuary. This was, used to be First Baptist Church, that was the sanctuary area, and so the court has expressed an interest in having a training area big enough to accommodate different-sized groups of people. And so we engaged an architect through the RFQ process and have worked with them for the last number of months to go through these two areas to see how best to accommodate the needs of Brazos County, and so this is the result of what we have found. So currently budgeted, the Commissioners' Court budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for the north wing feasibility study and one and a half million dollars for the actual construction, and then sanctuary feasibility study was another hundred thousand dollars for a total budgeted currently of one point seven million dollars. And so the results of that are the north wing renovation, we would redo the public restrooms in the north wing at the very entrance to that, kind of still in the public corridor area, and that would also include a mother's room to comply with our, since we're renovating that area, it's an opportunity to, to bring that up to, I'm going to misquote the code, Ms. Jennifer, whatever it is that says that you have to accommodate mothers that need to take care of their motherly responsibilities during the day. And then it also accommodates HR with a new orientation and conference room, reception area with small interview and a badge ID room, and then offices and open concept cubicles for the different areas that they need, not only now, but to accommodate growth in the future. And we worked with HR department on that, and still will continue to do so throughout the subsequent phases of the design work if the court provides the funding to do so. And so what we have here is, this is the little small hallway right now that comes, the elevators are over in this area, the corridor here, these bathrooms will be redone with the, the other two mother's rooms right here. You come into the reception area, and then that is a choke point. You have to have, be badged in or so forth to get any further into HR. They have a small interview room here, and then they have orientation or training, small trainings could be held in this area, but that's done on a weekly basis, if not several times a week, and so they need a space to be able to accommodate that. And then further in, they have the different areas and offices that they need, break room and so forth. This is not a final, final plan, but it's pretty, it's pretty close. There may be still some very, very small adjustments, and so we will, again, continue to work with HR as this progresses. So the next area is the training area, and this is, this is more difficult to kind of pin down exactly what the needs are. It's not an area that we have right now. It'd be a, a future growth area, but what we've taken is there is currently a single floor to that sanctuary area, and we would take and put a second floor in there. We would be able to accommodate on the first floor, large multipurpose room, you'd be able to seat a hundred and fifty people in just chairs. We would have a computer training room to handle forty people at tables with computers. That would take potentially the place of the current IT room that they have at the IT building, and it's bigger than they currently have to accommodate, again, growth of classes and so forth. Even then, there's very few times that the, I think, according to IT, there's very few times that that room is fully maximized, but we do see potentially need as departments continue to grow, we have more reliance on software and hardware and stuff like that, so this would hopefully accommodate that. And then we have a, we had, through input with the departments, we have a medium training room that would hold forty people, but in the event that you needed, you didn't need that big room and you needed more smaller rooms, then we have a mechanical divider wall similar to what we have at the Expo Center that you can split that room into two, it'll have a soundproof barrier installation and so forth, so you can accommodate, two different groups can hold separate meetings in adjacent rooms. And then we have a small room that holds about twenty people, that is a fixed set size. And then the second floor above the training area is going to be shelled out, drywall. If the county wanted to have an event up there to hold a larger number of people right now, then we could do so, but that'll be held and reserved for the Commissioners' Court to further dedicate that space later on in time as the growth of the county is needed. But that, again, is to be designated by Commissioners' Court in the future.
Can we stop for just a second and go back one? Okay, with the large multipurpose room for a hundred and fifty, I think one of the major things that takes place in that area now, that's a pretty big event, is the naturalization ceremonies. Would they still be able to do that there with that capacity?
We engaged with Judge.
Hawthorne?
I can't believe, Hawthorne, thank you, I apologize. We engaged with Judge Hawthorne, and he said that that space does not accommodate them, that they need a larger space, and that they would have that at the old eighty-fifth or the extra courtroom we have at the courthouse on the second floor at this time, that that's where they have, that would be more suited to that. We asked what accommodations we could make to make this room fit, and he said they need three to four hundred seats, which would take up the entire thing, and it would not be conducive to those activities. We asked about elections, have been held there before. Again, it technically could be, it's large enough, blah, 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 but those are not the primary activities, the, the drivers for that, the departments engaged in those particular activities were not interested at that time to make further accommodations in those areas to handle those activities.
Got you. So we're, so I'm, I'm still in the dark a little bit, where would we, where would we handle naturalization ceremonies?
At the, potentially at the courthouse in the, on the second floor in the old eighty-fifth courtroom.
And they've got like seating for three hundred there? Okay.
They could do it at the Brazos Center, they could do it at the Expo Center. We have other large multipurpose spaces that could accommodate something like that, but when things have choked down for COVID and then they've opened back up again, he said that there's a larger need for not only the, the people involved in the naturalization hearings, but their friends, family, supporters.
Oh, yeah.
That are celebrating that moment with them.
Their big events are good, thank you.
Very much so, yes, sir. So also included in this area, we wanted to be comprehensive and make sure that we're taking care of other areas that may be adjacent to this, but also accompany or expand on our ability to use those areas, and so we're also going to expand the public restrooms in the main corridor of the building, and we're going to add additional restrooms on the opposite side of the training area on the first and second floor and make those public restrooms a little more accommodative to ADA and so forth. And then another area, we, we look for access to the second floor. So we're going to have stairs as required for fireway exits, but there, we didn't have a really good area over there to put another elevator. If the main elevator goes down, the one right here at the north end of this atrium, we don't have a backup at this time. We do have the raceway or the, the framework for a second elevator, so we're going to go ahead and use that, and then there still will be access to, to reach the second floor and the, but the court decides to go ahead and, and build that out in offices or whether, whatever the need is, and then we will continue to look for additional possibilities to add another elevator on that end of the building at a later time. So this is what the sanctuary area looks like currently. On the first floor is over here, and it has a sloped floor, and then it has the, the choir area on a raised platform. All of that would be demolished as well as the secondary balcony area, all of that would be demolished, the first floor tentatively. In talking to the architect, they would put in a foundation plan with foam and concrete beams and stuff like that to accommodate it, that they do in other larger projects, fill it in so it'd be one level floor to accommodate the training areas. The framework would be put in for the second floor, the bracing and, and columns and all, and then pour concrete deck and all up there to be able to accommodate activities up there. So the, what it tentatively looks like is this on the first floor. Again, here's the bathrooms, the main public bathrooms that we have here when you enter the building. You would be able to come in through these three existing doors that may or may not change to two or three or whatever. You have the one large multipurpose area that seats a hundred and fifty. This area right here is the, we call the computer training area that'll seat forty people. We have the small meeting room right here that is a fixed size, and then we have the medium size right here that you can close this middle door right here, or not door, I apologize, operable wall to make it a smaller, two smaller rooms, or you can leave it open to accommodate a larger group of, I think, forty. We have associated storage here to be able to handle chavels, chairs, stuff like that to support different configurations, whether it be the sheriff's department, district clerk, HR, whatever the case may be, and then we have restrooms on the far side as well, and then IT custodian closet and so forth. Second floor would be much the same look. We would have restrooms on both the north and the south side of the area, the stairwell and so forth, and then a hallway to traverse from one end to the other, and then this shows, if you will, a piece of the north wing bathroom renovations that was reflected in the earlier plan. All right, I talked too much. Let's get down to the nuts and bolts. The north wing design we have as a hundred thousand dollars right now. The construction, FFNE and all, is estimated, this is a very early estimate, nothing's been drawn, the market times are changing, so I asked the court to use caution in putting this in concrete right now, but it is estimated at one point four million dollars. The training area is designed as four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, and the construction, FFNE, associated appurtenances are estimated to be a little over seven million dollars. So in number fifteen, I believe, in the agenda later on, you will see our request for the design contracts for the amount of one hundred thousand dollars and four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars associated with this area. And then we will come back later on when we get closer, we have better numbers, we have hopefully a little less lead time for the market conditions and all, we can have more accurate numbers, hopefully to the tune for the total project of a little over nine million dollars. But this would accommodate different areas. We don't have to build training areas in the courthouse and the BISD and all over the county. We have one common area where everything can be centralized, the technology can be kept up to date, it's easier to access with IT and all that if you need tech support or help. And then it's a very flexible space, hopefully with different sized rooms and all to accommodate a multitude of different activities.
I know that'll free up some room over in IT that they may want to use too.
Yes, sir.
Can we go back and look at the second floor diagram?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, the first floor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just looking at the drawing here, how, how are the small meeting rooms, the divisible ones accessible? I don't see a door there.
There, there will be, again, this is a, this is just blocks on a piece of paper this time, Commissioner. More than likely, they would be accessible from this hallway here.
From, I'm sorry. Okay. All right.
And again, depending on columns and.
485,000 dollars later, we'll know, right?
Unfortunately, this means whether we, whether we did not do the design for the feasibility stage and we went straight into the design docs.
Yeah.
We think that this helps us better flesh out what exactly are the capabilities of the area and gets us, we've been working on this for several months and this is like the fifth iteration of where we are. And so I think it better, it better allows us to get more efficiency out of the actual design instead of having the frustration levels grow as the clock is burning, but they're not getting any additional time. It allows for the county to get better economical use of our dollars.
Gotcha. Okay. And remind me the source of funds for these.
This would all be bond money for these.
Okay. I thought we had put some ARPA money. I thought we had dedicated some ARPA money towards this.
We had, except that when you start looking at these projects with the BISD building and the medical examiner, you would need to have a little piece in every fund. And from an accounting and purchasing standpoint, that gets very difficult to manage. And so since the certificates of obligation are 10 million, we felt like this project, both sanctuary and the north wing, would fit nicely into those COs and therefore free up 1.7 million in ARPA funds for medical examiner, BISD and other ARPA projects.
Gotcha. All right. Thanks. That, that helped, that clears up the, the flow of funds for me. Thank you.
Glad I could answer that for you.
You bet. Great chat. So how, how's he done so far?
So far.
Good, good.
I agree.
All right. Y'all have any further questions? I think that's fine. Good job. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Now we will consider and take action on Agenda Is four through 25. Number four is approval requested from Brazos County Emergency Services District. Number two to extend the deadline to be no later than June 30, 2023 for filing audit report for the fiscal year 2021, 22.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Much made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number five is request from risk management for the approval for acceptance of two $100 Walmart gift cards from Wilton's Office Works to be used for purchases of Health and Safety Expo, June 15, 2023 for the employees of Brazos County, City of College Station, City Bryant. Move for approval?
Second.
Much made. Second to discussion.
With thanks to Stan Wilton?
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is approval of interno cooperation contract, HHS REV 100002986 with the Department of State Health Services. This contract will allow the county clerk to access DSHS Vital Event Electronic Registration System for the purpose of accepting and issuing vital records. Move approval?
Second.
Much made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is approval of the following job descriptions. A detention counselor juvenile services 10, 20, 80 hours, psychologist juvenile services 20, 80 hours, and grant writer, county auditor, 20, 80 hours.
Move for approval, A through C?
Second.
Much made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is request from county auditor for the following personnel changes are changed with effective date, May 27, 2023. Requested change has no effect on the county auditor's budget, FY 2023 budget. Move grant writer, county auditor, B0325-1 from salary to alrite.
Move for approval?
Second.
Much made. Second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is discussion and possible action on the cost of living adjustment in COLA for the fiscal year 2023, 24.
Okay. Good morning. My foot woke up. As you may be.
I noticed the limp.
I know. I was asleep. Come on. So as you may be aware, I know some of y'all are new, salary and benefits are approximately 50% of our budget, our expenditure budget, anywhere from 47 to 50% depending on where we're at that year. And so we wanted to, before budget process got fully underway, which is June 1st, where we will begin having budget meetings with the various departments to discuss their needs, we wanted to go ahead and see where we stand on a possible cost of living increase that affects everybody in the county or the only people that we've excluded in the past might be a temporary position or elected officials. I'm not asking to exclude that this year because of inflation. So we did an analysis. If we, we wanted to try to tie the, any kind of cost of living increase to maybe some economic indicators rather than not. And, and you know, we could do a survey among other counties, they don't know, not now. And so we're trying to get a jump on it. So we did a, a weighted average of the supplemental security income. If you look, it's nice. No, this one's right. This is the weighted average of three, basically of three different components. One is the supplemental security income, SSI, which is not controlled by us, that's an economic indicator, and the consumer price index. Now we did, we chose to do the weighted average from May to April because while the social, excuse me, supplemental security income is set on a calendar year, we felt like the CPA, which is CPI, sorry, which is monthly, would get us more current. If we only did the CPI either on our fiscal year or calendar year, there's anywhere from five to six months that we are out of touch as far as what, a prime example would be what happened during 2020 and COVID. In December, we didn't know that was coming, but by May it was here and the economy had changed drastically. And so we wanted to kind of get something a little bit more current. The other thing that we did based on, is Brazos County cost of living increases for the last five years weighted average. As you can see on the next, thanks Cheryl, this is the pattern. The, I think green is the SSI, the blue is the CPI, and the gold is where we've been with Brazos County. We're running, we're running a little different than the SSI and CPI, but the average of the averages is about 5% for this year. You can see the, going out two decimals on the previous page. I think you have copies of these, do you? Yes? Okay. We don't know, go ahead and go to the next slide, Cheryl, and please interrupt if you have any questions. Okay? Oh, Lord. Yeah, nobody can read that. Do you have copies of these?
Yes.
Yeah. Good. We based our estimates for FY 24 on how much the COLA with benefits of the various percentages, which is normally what we do, would cost. We have preliminary property tax appraisals. Preliminary can be, it's before protest, so it can be rather, it can fluctuate quite a bit to the actual that we get in July or August. But we went ahead and based these estimates on the appraised values and certified tax roll as of, for the 2022 tax year. Sorry, I gotta get on my ears right. As you can tell, 1% of a general fund increase in COLA would cost us $682,000 based on the previous year's tax roll. And it goes up to, we went ahead and did all the way up to 7% of $4,777,383. I know it's hard to do it now. We do not know the certified tax roll. But if we do not attempt to establish something at this time, the budget process throughout June and July becomes very unwieldy as far as every department's going to have to look at their own individuals and see what they think they should do first. And then it'll, it'll, there'll be a thousand different ways to do it. So I'm asking y'all's input on a cost of living for 23, 24.
Question?
I have some thoughts. I'd like to, for the purposes of discussion, throw out a 6% number. Our people are still hurting. You go to the grocery store and buy some eggs and milk and bananas and breads, just fruits and vegetables are way up. So for purposes of discussion, I'd like to throw out a 6% COLA.
Katie, how do your calculations factor in openings? I know we have a lot of unfilled positions in the county right now. Is this assuming at 100% staffing level or, or how do these, how does that factor in?
Currently, I do not know how many positions are open, open to date, but last year we were directed to look at the people or the positions that were below living wage. And in order for us to get above living wage this year, we would have to go with a 6% and it affects 71 positions.
But these costs are based on 100% of budgeted positions.
Right. 100% of budgeted positions versus excluding vacant positions. So these, yes, considering the amount of vacant positions we currently have, these costs are probably high.
Two questions. First one was is with regard to our, I don't, I think it was 16 people last year that we were talking about?
Yes, sir. We are considering that and plan to address several positions in the department that were less than living wage. Living wage is a little unwieldy.
Right.
In that it's based on the number of people and we can't know that.
Right.
But yes, those 16 positions we were going to consider during the meetings, discuss. And basically what we would end up, we've talked about doing is eliminating groups one through 10 on the group and step chart.
Okay.
And it would cost us, depending on how much the COLA is today, it would cost us about 59, 60,000, excuse me, 60,000 to get everybody above a cost, excuse me, a living wage.
Okay. And could we address that specific to those positions? Or you, you made the comment that 6% would be required to get everybody there.
6% would be required there.
If we address those positions individually or specific to their job category.
Right.
Then we wouldn't need the 6% to get there. They, everybody would be there. And you said the figure for that's like $59,000?
60,000, yes, sir. We cannot address the individual positions today.
Okay.
Because it's not posted that way.
Right. But, but that's a possibility. Okay. And the other one was is do we have an estimate so far of what our new property?
Yes.
Value would be in tax revenue at our current rate?
Remember, estimate in May is, can kind of be, it's before protest, but it's anywhere between two and a half to $3 million.
Okay.
At our current tax rate.
All right. I think those are the two questions I have. Yeah, because 3 million would be, if we're making the assumption of 100% employment, which we're not there, 3 million of additional, let's say we're at the higher end, 3 million of additional property at our current tax rate would generate enough to do 4.5%, correct?
Yes, sir. Okay. And we would.
Well, I know we've had a lot of discussions lately about recruiting and retaining employees. And I mean, I know that's, that's a problem everywhere, you know, no matter what, but the, I mean, I know that there were, the last time I heard, there were a good many positions open within the county. And there has been some difficulty, you know, recruiting folks to come. And I don't know what that number is.
I believe your chief of staff mentioned when he reported to us, it's 170.
I almost finished and say that, that was the last number I had.
But that's the number that he reported to us.
It's consistently that. You can kind of keep track.
Yeah. Well, and I mean, certainly salary is one piece of what, of the reason that someone may come and stay.
Yes.
With the county. And so, and I, I believe we have probably been some degree behind, certainly the private sector and maybe even the other governments, you know. So I don't know. I mean, Mr. Berry's suggestion may be something we should look at to try to make sure that we're, we're competitive because if, if we, if we're not competitive, then we're going to continue to be lacking in positions that, that are needed. I mean, if they weren't needed, we wouldn't have them. And so the, the bulk of the workload then falls on the people that are still here, you know. And so I, you know, I know we, we need to try to make a decision today because that's the best for y'all to be able to move forward with the budget and for, as you said, all the department heads and.
Elected officials.
And elected officials then can take a look at their budget and they'll know, well, here's what it is for, has been proposed by the Commissioners Court for salaries. And it'll make it easier on them then to look and see whether or not they think they need to do anything or not.
And this is, you're telling me what to include in the proposed. It can still be changed after the proposed budget.
Yeah. But I tell you, we talked about that last year. Once you make a statement, you're pretty much committed to that as far as that goes because of the way it's communicated. And clearly.
Well, it's still proposed anyway. I mean.
Yeah.
It will be.
But clearly, the comments that were made when we went to the no new revenue rate about there won't be the ability to get increases in the future, obviously those are not true because seven months into the current year at the no new revenue rate, you are projecting a surplus.
Yes, sir. The projections include approximately 20 million in revenues over expenditures. However, seven, excuse me, 10 million of that is the debt we just issued certificates of obligation and 7.2 of that is ARPA, revenue replacement. That still leaves some on the table. Yes, sir.
Yeah. And it's right, in spite of.
Also, also remember that.
In spite of the, I know that I, I see in the news that there's been estimates of 20% increase in appraisals, but we're still limited to that revenue cap of 3.5%. So I mean, that doesn't, doesn't apply to an individual property, but overall, we cannot increase our revenue above 3.5% without going to an election.
Judge, that's not necessarily true because we have an, we have a unused increment.
Yes, that's right. That was part of my, fixing to be my comment was that you can look back, but it is 3.5% is what the state set on cities and counties.
Right.
But, but then you can look back at what you lacked in, in other years.
And since we're at the no new revenue rate, we saved all of last year's unused increment between the 3.5% of what last year would be.
We, we did.
Okay.
But of course, we were not able to, I mean, we can see right now of the things that we're not able to move forward on. During COVID, we had a lot of projects that did not even move forward because of everything that was impacted. And it's just now that we've come out far enough that we're able to try to go out and get bids for things that have to happen.
We haven't looked at our fund balance on that yet, but I think that that'll be reflected in our fund balance for sure.
Yes. I think over the next two or three years. Yes, I think over the next two or three years, we will certainly see that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm reluctant for us to make an initial commitment relative to the budget that we would go above five percent because I think the five percent is a prudent look at what our, a little bit more than what our new property at current tax rate would be. That would be three million. Five percent would be three point four million. So I, I certainly, and I think the, the average that you see, that you've seen is a five percent. Of course, let's not forget too, that typically there's a one percent merit that goes along with this too. So if we're talking six percent, we're really looking at the numbers for funding of four point seven seven million, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Also, keep in mind that, and this is just information, the no new, odds are the new, the twenty twenty-three no new revenue will be less than our current rate.
Oh, yes.
And so.
With twenty percent average values up, our no new revenue rate theoretically should drop twenty percent.
And what we'll, we'll most likely end up doing is splitting any increases in the budget between fund balance and taxes. I don't know what, what percentage, it just kind of depends, and y'all will ultimately make that decision. But I think it'll take a little bit of both.
I would be much more comfortable if we made a proposal for the proposed budget of a five percent. If there's room, that we figure out that we've got, we can do that. And I'd also like to, you know, last year, we spent time talking about our unfilled positions. We spent some time and we took particular detail because our largest areas of unfilled are sheriff's detention and juvenile detention.
Yes, sir.
Those are the two big ones, and we addressed those specifically.
Yes.
The legislature so far has not made a declaration of what they're gonna do with TDCJ, but I'd like to also hear how we specifically address those unfilled positions with comp on the compensation side as opposed to saying, hey, we're gonna blanket across the board, do this to fix everybody. As well as what we're talking about with the people who are below the living wage. I'd like to see specifically, I'd like to see us specifically address those positions with compensation as opposed to saying, hey, a blanket for everybody covers that too, which it may not. You know, I'd like to hear from juvenile detention, I'd like to hear from juvenile, I'd like to hear from SO as well about, okay, what do they think that we need? Because they did some great detailed work last year, and I want to specifically address those positions where we have the vacancies.
And we will have budget meetings with budget staff and department head and elected officials, all through June and through July thirteenth. And then we will include the best, to the best of our ability, prepare a draft budget, and then in August, after the tax rate, excuse me, tax, certified tax roll hopefully is in, we will go through all those requests, telling you what we've included in the proposed budget, how we came up with that, and we'll have workshop, budget workshops where all that information will be available.
But in or, but in order for you to do that, whatever proposed rate we set, it affords each of those departments to have a starting point as they look at where they need to be, how they need to hire.
Yes, ma'am.
And so whatever rate we set, regardless of.
And we will look at individuals, but yes, ma'am.
Right, because they need a starting point.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm good with that, I'm just not good with six percent. Plus a, plus a merit on top of that.
Yeah, we haven't addressed that yet either.
Looking at new property, the high end, you said, was three million.
Yes, sir.
At our current rate. You know, at, at, at five percent, we're exceeding that.
So point of clarification for me.
Yes, ma'am.
The merit, I'm not aware of, the merit is automatically built into this?
No, ma'am.
It's not a guarantee?
It's not a guarantee.
So if you set a proposed rate, he's, he was saying, I may be misunderstanding because I'm, that a merit is, is one percent.
On top of whatever is possibly decided today.
Typically in the past.
But it's not automatic?
Typically in the past, Commissioner, that's what we've done. But I mean.
We could choose to not, yes.
It's been like, ever since I've been here, so we're talking six years.
COLA merit was not awarded for twenty twenty.
That was the, that was the COVID year. Where we were zero, if you go and look back at those graphs.
Correct, and regarding the merit, if you want to look at more specific positions, merit's not the way to go. Merit is gonna be based on the person in the position, and it will still skew, you know, the positions across the board.
So it doesn't guarantee, you know, because I come from a different industry, so, you know, merits were based on merit.
Right.
It wasn't an automatic.
And it still is.
Across the board.
Correct. But moving forward with some sort of idea of how to enter the COLA for us to get a proposed amount, what's going to be spent, because now we're looking at the positions that have been requested, and that will be put on hold because right now we're looking at the FY twenty-three amounts, that's what we're using for our estimates is our FY twenty-three amounts, which will not be correct when we're moving towards the proposed budget because COLA's not in it, if we're not gonna look at until then, as well as your insurance, if we're gonna have insurance costs, retirement costs, that's coming in the next couple of weeks. And so the starting benefits is fifty percent of our budget, that's gonna allow us to answer a lot of questions as we're meeting with the department heads and elected officials and help them, help them along the way.
Have a starting point.
At least.
Well, I know our, big part of our benefits that we're gonna have to address, and we don't know anything about that, is, is our healthcare costs.
That is true. They, that will actually be a workshop.
And that actually goes into all of our comp figures there because everything on benefits, that's gonna have to change based on what we're doing, experience as far as our healthcare goes, particularly healthcare. It's the big one, right?
Yes, although the legislature, I kind of want to wait, I don't know how to say it right, signe die?
Yeah.
Signe die. It looks like signe die. It's Latin for, we're done. Hasn't happened yet, and so some of those will possibly affect our retirement and could affect our de minimis rate and our increment. I've heard all different things, we'll see what passes.
Assuming there's no special session.
I think we'll have to do a budget regardless of a special session.
Gotta make plans, thank you.
Well, I know the sheriff's office, one of the things that they always wanted to be included is a merit type, because they have a system set up in place to, I don't remember what you call it right now, the.
Career ladder.
Career ladder, yeah, that's it.
So the SO, the sheriff's administration, along with the jail, their medical side, and their special services, they have what they call a career ladder. And it's based on certifications, degrees, and that's how they receive the merit. This year, we're kind of looking at different ways to help establish regarding employee retention, and so we're looking at the sheriff's office, since they already have a career ladder, seeing how we can fix that, and it would be, the merit would kind of be built in that career, in the salary ranges.
We're still in discussions with the sheriff's office and jail. It looks positive at this point. One of the main takeaways is that it wouldn't be on group and step, and eliminating the requirement to do two and a half every, for everything, gives them some flexibility and also allows them to have, have, what's the word I'm looking for? A future, something they can speak a little bit more to the future for their employees and with their employees based on their licenses and certifications than maybe they have now. Because right now, if somebody's hired in February, they can get an increase to a certain, it'd have to be a two and a half percent increase, but if they get a license, a certification above their current but, position budget, they couldn't get a raise. And so we're trying to maintain funding, but increase flexibility that will hopefully help increase retention over the long term because you are investing in education and certifications and training.
So would you expect if, if we set, let's just say for instance, if we set a COLA at five percent and with the sheriff's office, would they, they would not be able to do their career ladder without an additional funding from, let's say, what we used to call or maybe still do, a merit? That's, was that, is that what I'm hearing, that whatever we set for COLA, we're still gonna need some money? If we, if we were to do that, and I'm not saying we are, but if we do that, we'd still need some, an extra one percent in the past, or is that?
It's going to be built in their salary range, and so the merit, the so-called one percent will be already built in their salary ranges. And so if we agree to move forward in this idea, they will not have to request additional merit funding, it's already gonna be there.
Because of vacancies.
Right.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I was gonna say, with, with the number of vacancies, because the, because the, if I understand it correctly, merit is based on number of budgeted positions, not on filled positions. Is that correct? So there's more merit, if you have a ten percent shortfall in staffing, then you've got ten percent additional merit money to be able to distribute, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And hopefully, this will allow them to maneuver employees throughout the year, and they wouldn't have to rely on coming to court to restructure the positions based on the steps. It'll allow them to actually do what they need to do. We're giving the funding, they need to manage their funds and hopefully have more employee retention.
I'm, you know, four and a half percent from the numbers that you're showing here are about three million dollars. That's the upper end of what we think new revenue is gonna be from new property.
Yes.
And not knowing what we're gonna do, not knowing what healthcare costs are gonna look like, because we still have a significant commitment to our employees relative to that, having, have historically at least, and I think we should continue that. But four and a half percent's prudent, looking at no new, not knowing what healthcare cost is. And like I say, I think we're, we're establishing what we want to build a proposed budget with as opposed to, hey, this is what the final's gonna be. Four and a half's prudent, five stretches it, and with unknowns of what our healthcare costs are gonna be, the county portion.
Right. There's a lot of unknowns at this point.
Yeah, and I think, hey, if we start prudently and establish that, that's great. If we can push that out even further, that's good too.
So four and a half percent plus getting all positions to living wage is probably prudent, we can revisit that, we can increase that as the budget goes, the unknowns that are coming forward.
Yeah, your three point one.
Right, if it's the worst case scenario.
Your three point one four million there.
Right, right. Right.
And it also, that would also leave us flexibility to do more.